So we're on session three. Before we get started, let's, if everyone will open up their workbook to page forty-nine. We'll start with our opening prayer. In the name of the Father, Son of the Holy Spirit. Oh God, who willed that your only begotten son should undergo the cross to save the human race. Grant, we pray, that we, who have known his mystery on earth, may merit the grace of his redemption in heaven. To our Lord Jesus Christ, your son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, God forever and ever, amen. In the name of the Father, Son of the Holy Spirit, amen. So, welcome to our third session. These are just flying by even though we've missed a week. Our third session today is salvation, not without cost. It follows on with our salvation, not self-help, and salvation, not just fire insurance. The theme is consistent and persistent through these sessions. And that theme is focused and centered upon the love of God. And that's going to be especially so today. We may ask the question from time to time, why the cross? Why did Jesus suffer and die? Why was that necessary? What was going on? And so, we're going to hear from Dr. Barber today, some pretty deep and profound answers to that question, but they're fundamental to us and to our relationship with God. And I'm not sure we think about it this way that often, but we ought to. So, without stating what he's going to talk about, I wanted to focus on something else. But before I do that, what was our, you don't have to say it, but can you cite it? What is the memory verse from session one? What book, chapter, and verse? Philippians two eight. No? Ephesians two eight. Did you say Ephesians? I thought you said Philippians. I almost had you. Okay. We talked about Philippians two today, so it's Ephesians two eight. And our memory verse from session two last week, or week before last, was John ten-ten. So next week, we'll ask, what does Ephesians two eight say and what does John ten-ten say? Today, though, we're going to be looking at the act of God's love for us, fundamentally, his pouring out his love for us on the cross. I want to remind everyone, including myself, that when we talk about Jesus Christ, we have to be aware of who he is and what he is. The who he is, is he's one divine person. He's not a man person and a God person. He is a divine person. He is the second person of the Blessed Trinity. That's his identity. That's who he is. What he is, is he is the only begotten son of God, eternally begotten of the Father, right? God from God, life from life, true God from true God, from all ages. Our language is just failing here. So, there is no beginning and no end to God. And in one God are three divine persons, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Jesus is the divine son. But we see him and came to experience him and encountered him as he took on his human form. So, while rebating one God, somehow mysteriously, he united to his divinity, a human nature that is simply a human body and a human soul. So he is true God and true man. So, in everything he does, in everything he says, he is God. So, when he dies on the cross, that's God dying on the cross. Or maybe said in a way that's more, less jarring, it's God experiencing the death of a human being personally on the cross, right? Because Jesus is true God and true man, death to Jesus is just like death to us, the separation of his human body and his human soul. But he's still God, who can't die. So it's in his humanity that he experienced death. So it's also safe to say, or right to say, that Jesus loves divinely, but that he also expresses that love humanly, because he's true God and true man. But it's one person doing that. So, why do I say all of that? Because there is a misconception that Dr. Barber doesn't talk about today. I kind of wish he had. What he has to say, though, is so powerful that maybe he couldn't do that and get it across, but to me, it left a question. We live in the South, and it is not unusual for us to encounter fellow believers who believe that Jesus Christ experienced the wrath of God, the anger of God, in punishment for our sins. That Jesus, who was fully innocent, had the wrath of God poured out on him. That he was tortured in our place. That he was killed in our place, out of the anger and wrath of God. But there are several problems with that. One would simply be that God the Father, if he was angry with us and ready to execute his wrath upon us, what about Jesus? Jesus is God too. And God is of one mind. Just don't get into the wills and all of that, but just, God the Father and God the Son can't want two different things. God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit are united in what they want and what they do. So, when Jesus dies on the cross, he's doing something that he willed from the beginning, right? That's another deeper subject. I can see why he didn't go into this. God's mind does not change. In God, there's no potential for change. He doesn't wake up one day and say, you know what? I'm going to do something different today. This is all part of a divine plan of providence that's taking place. To punish Jesus in place of us, to torture him and to kill him in place of us, would be unjust, because it's not just to punish an innocent person. Even if that person said, punish me instead. To torture anyone is not just. To torture an innocent person is not just. And for this principle to take place and be real, God the Father would have to want one thing, and God the Son would have to want something else. God the Father would be angry with us, pouring out his wrath upon us, and Jesus would be saying, no, I love him. Pour your wrath out on me instead. Sounds good, but it is problematic, because God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit are of one mind on things. So what is God actually doing? Why did Jesus die? Why did he suffer and die? And what we're going to hear about today from Dr. Barber is something so beautiful and so grounded in love, remembering that God is not just a loving God, but is love. God is love. There is a secret to living in what took place that can change and transform your life. And how he pours himself out to us reflects how God the Father and God the Son pour out their love for one another. So God the Son, in the incarnation, can express a human love for the divine, for God. But since he's one person, he's also loving divinely, both the Father and the Holy Spirit and us. And he's empowering us to love as he loves. He's transforming through that love, our failures, our sinfulness, our imperfections, our attachments. So let's listen to Dr. Barber, and then we'll go into our discussion questions. I want to skip the very first part, the connect questions today, because of the complexity of this. I do want to look ahead to the memory verse, which is on page fifty-three. It's from First John four-nine. "In this the love of God was made manifest among us. That God sent his only begotten son into the world, so that we might live through him." God's motivation and everything that we experience in redemption, and his becoming one of us, and redeeming us, is motivated out of his love for us, is executed out of his love for us, finds its meaning in his love for us. So, once the video's over, go directly into your conversations. So I had a couple of comments, a couple of questions that I think I need to address, and then we'll see if there's any other questions. It is a belief, a teaching, a dogma of the church. Excuse me. It is a dogma of the church that God is absolutely immutable. That is, he is incapable of change. Not only do Christians believe this, but Jews believe this, and Muslims believe this. So, God doesn't change. He's the same yesterday, today, and tomorrow. We've all heard that, right? It is also a teaching of the church that because God can't change, he doesn't have emotions. Have you ever heard that before? Okay. Aquinas spoke on this very eloquently. So when we read passages or say things like, God is angry, hates sin, that's a figurative language, not to be taken in a literalist way. God is so infinite in his beatitude. His goodness can't be any goodness, or, he can't be any more full of goodness than he is. His blessedness is infinite. All of his perfections are infinite. In fact, since God is one, right? All the different perfections that we speak of, God is good, God is powerful, God is all-knowing, all of those things really are all the same thing in God. And he's infinite in his perfections. So no matter how bad you act, no matter how much you reject him, no matter how much you sin against him and offend him, you can't make him less than what he is, because God doesn't change. He is not dependent on us. But we use human language to try to apprehend, try to understand God, and our human language is inadequate to the task. It's all we got, though, right? So we try. So, what is God's wrath? When we speak of God's wrath, what is God's wrath? There is a total incompatibility of our sinfulness with the goodness of God. So pray, God, when we attain heaven, there will be no sinfulness left in us, no imperfections left in us. We will have been perfected in his love. We cannot enter heaven if we still have imperfections. So Jesus Christ paid the price for our sins. Jesus Christ, yes, he is the second person of the Blessed Trinity, but he also now has attached, united with him, careful with language, he has united with him a human nature, in which he can experience emotions. That begins to let us see the great gift that God has given us just by virtue of becoming one of us in his Son, that now he can experience all that we do. God is incapable of suffering, but God the Son is capable of suffering in his humanity. So God doesn't change. God doesn't get angry. God doesn't get wrathful, wrathful. But when we speak of that, we speak of the incompatibility of sin and goodness, of sin and God. And Jesus has paid the debt that our sin incurred. So when we celebrate Mass, right? When we go to Mass and celebrate, we're not only participating in a sacrifice of thanksgiving, right? There's also another sacrifice that's taking place there, or another act that's taking there, is our sin is being paid for, in that once-for-all sacrifice. And we experience that ourselves, in that our venial sins, when we go to Mass in a state of grace, our venial sins are forgiven us by our worthy participation in Mass. So, I don't know if that helps the couple of comments I had. Are there any other questions? Something you just have to take in and reflect on for a while and follow up with the five days of commit? Neil. Neil always asks a question I can't answer, so the sweat begins.
Calm, calm down, everybody. So, God is immutable, can't change his mind. And yet, in the Old Testament, Moses convinces God, hey, don't destroy the Israelites. God, I want to start over. Moses says, no, let me do it, or whatever. And then God talking to Abraham, I'm going to destroy Sodom and Gomara. And Abraham says, no, no, convinces him not to do it. So what does that mean in terms of God's immutability?
Okay. So in God, did everyone hear the question? Okay. It's a great question, and one I can answer. That's good. That's, that makes one in a row. Have to get back on camera. Okay. The question is, if God is immutable, and he is, how do we square that, or how do we explain, or how are we to understand those episodes in the Old Testament, particularly involving, well, one example that Neil gave was Moses arguing, right, for God to change his mind. God doesn't change his mind. So what's happening when we pray to God for a particular outcome? Because we do that all the time, right? We might pray that we have a loved one, maybe a child, and that child's kind of drifted off the right path, and we pray that God will do something to save our child, to draw our child back to the right path. Well, we're not, I hope, that we're not thinking that God is an atteniff. And if he'd just wake up and spot what was going on, he'd act differently. So maybe if I pray to him and ask him to do something that he's not presently doing, I'll change his mind. And he'll say, okay, you've convinced me, I'll go do that. But that's not what's happening at all. Just as God, in God, there is no potential for change, which by the way is scriptural, just as in God, there is no potential for change, his plan of divine providence is immutable also. So everything that's happening right now is unchanging. But what role does our prayers have? And that's what Moses and Abraham were doing when they were conversing with God, right? They were praying as we might pray to God for a particular thing, to intercede for someone else, or to petition for something for ourselves. Intercessory prayer and petition, prayers and petition, are things we're encouraged to do. The plan of divine providence, which has existed from the beginning, because you have to remember, there's two things about God that are fundamental. God is the altogether other. He's not one of us. God is not a part of his creation. We are his creation. That's number one. Number two, time is part of creation. But God is not part of creation, so God doesn't experience time. He's outside of time. I know this is for people whose total existence is marked by a journey through time. And boy, is it getting faster and faster the older I get, right? And our experience is also one that we don't see things get better over time ordinarily. We see them become more frail and more broken. You can see a glass fall off a table and shatter, but you never see shattered glass jump up off the floor and come back on the table and reform itself, right? There is a pattern to the way we live, and it affects and influences the way we think. So we try to apply that to God. But God is not part of his creation. He's outside of creation. He developed, there's that word again, that has a tense to it, doesn't it? It seems to say that somewhere back in time, he did this. But it wasn't back in time. It was actually before there was any time, so before and after doesn't really apply, does it? That's how hard it is to talk about God's unchanging being, nature, mind, acts. All of this happened, happens, will happen, outside of time. So, things happen in this world because of God's explicit will, or his permissive will. And the things that happen as a result of that is as unchanging as anything else. But our prayers are anticipated, here's that word again, I'm using a tense. God takes into consideration, forget tenses, God, in executing his plan of divine providence, took into consideration every prayer, every request, every petition, every act that we have, are, or will make in our life. So our prayers are part of the influence on how providence has played out. But God's not in time. He's not waiting right now to wonder whether or not I'm going to change my mind and spare this city. He took that into consideration before the city even existed, before Sodom and Gomara ever existed. His plan was put in motion. And our prayers and petitions to him were part of the consideration that has influenced and impacted and resulted in how that plan plays out. So, hope that answers. Another question.
Just a follow-up. If this is true, then how do we deal with predestination?
So, the question is, if this is true, and it is, how do we deal with predestination? So I'll throw a question back at you. Does the Catholic Church believe in predestination? Absolutely, the Church does believe in predestination. However, the Church does not believe in predestination as understood by Calvinist, Presbyterians, and some other religious denominations, teachers. Predestination in the Catholic sense is a foreknowledge on the part of God. It's what I just explained, that God knew from the moment of creation, from the Big Bang Ford, or whatever it was, the act of God that brought everything into being, his plan of salvation, his plan of providence was in place. He created us knowing that the consequence of how he created us would result in his Son coming into that creation, becoming man involuntarily, offering himself as a sacrifice to expiate our sins. He knew that from the beginning. That's predestination. That does not violate our free will. He doesn't make us do anything. He just has a foreknowledge of everything that we will do. So, when you typically hear of predestination, you think of it in terms of how usually Presbyterians and some others, John Knox, John Calvin, and others, would understand it, that there's absolutely nothing we can do, one way or the other. Saying yes, saying no, being saved, not being saved, giving our life to Jesus, not giving our life to Jesus. If God didn't choose to save you, it's not going to happen. But the Catholic Church, even though we believe in predestination from the standpoint of a foreknowledge of all that is playing out, desires all men and women to come to a saving knowledge of God. Okay? Any other questions or follow-up? All right. Let's turn to, anyone know where I turn to? Oh, another question? Okay, let's, don't turn yet. If I could get a volunteer, we could have a camera operator, and I wouldn't have to keep walking back and forth.
Okay. So if everything is predetermined, we're always told pray, if you have a special intention, or praying for someone's safety, or someone's health. If everything is predetermined, then what's the point of prayer?
Okay. If everything is predetermined, what's the point of prayer? That would, that question would tend to say, I'm not trying to put words into your mouth, but that question would tend to say that my prayers won't make any difference. If what I, if you're understanding what I'm saying, then you're drawing a conclusion that my prayers don't make any difference. That's totally opposite, I think, what I tried to say. Our prayers were taken into consideration by God before we ever uttered them, and are part of how things are playing out. This is so amazingly important. I'm going to give you something, right? So it's a point at once for man to die and then comes a judgment. There's no second chances, right? We die either in God's friendship or not, either in a state of sanctifying grace. We die either in God's friendship or not, either in a state of sanctifying grace or not. There's nothing that can happen after we die that's going to change where we spend all eternity, not a thing. Purgatory is not a second chance. We all know that, right? Purgatory is God's fiery love perfecting us as he draws us to heaven. So it's a point at once that we die. And at the moment of death, we are either saved or we're not saved. We're either justified or not justified. We're either on our way to heaven, maybe through purgatory, or on our way to hell. That's just the way it is. I pray for my mom and my dad every single day, that they be saved. And I pray for my sister, too. I pray for my mother and father, Peter and Ann, my sister Des, and my in-laws Dorothy and Charles, all of them long dead. My sister died five years ago. My mother died in 96. My father died in 68. But I pray for their salvation every day. Now, if they're already dead and their eternal destiny is already determined, why am I praying for them? Well, I'm praying for them in two aspects, two ways. One is assuming that they are being purified and purgated in purgatory. I'm praying for their deliverance from purgatory into their, into heaven. But I'm also praying that in the case that at the moment of death, as they were approaching it, they weren't in a state of grace, I'm praying that God will make it possible for them to say yes to his grace and be saved. Why can I do that now when their death happened in the past? Not because they get a second chance after death, but because God is outside of time and anticipates my every prayer. Has that ever happened before? Has, have we ever seen an example of that happen as expressed and experienced in our faith? Yes. Can you think of who, great, this great person, this great actor in salvation history that this happened to? Mary. Mary was prevented from being stained, her Immaculate Conception, right? She was not stained by original sin. Why not? According to the Declaration that provided the expression of the dogma of what we believe with the Immaculate Conception, it said that God anticipated the merits in the saving act of her son on the cross and applied it to her so that she didn't suffer from the effects of original sin, from the stain of original sin. So I want you to think about this. We don't know exactly how old Mary was when Jesus was born. Let's say she was 15, just to make it an easy number, okay? And at her own conception, that would have been 15 years and nine months early. Let's just call it 16 years to make it easy on me. And Jesus died at 33. Right? Okay, so there's another nine months and 33 more years. Let's just say 33 and 16 and be done with it and throw another year on there for fun. Forty years. Forty years before the crucifixion, Mary benefited from the crucifixion. God is outside of time. He's not bound by our clock. Does that make sense? If Mary avoided original sin because of the sacrifice of her son, who was not yet even conceived, think about that. The possibilities open up. Your prayer life just got busier. Right? Your prayer life just got busier. So the things we do, the things we say, the acts that we make are all taken into consideration in God's immutable plan of divine providence. So predestination does not mean that our acts are meaningless. It just means that they were taken into consideration prior to us even making them, prior to ever even being a creation. Any more questions? I feel like I'm leaving something out of that, but I'll stop there. Yep.
It was more of a statement that this is why we can pray for those who committed suicide, right?
There is a story, someone correct me if I'm wrong, having one of those moments either. St. John Viani, I think it might have been St. John Viani, right? Who tried in comforting, I think, the wife of a man who had jumped off of Notre Dame, said to her, not fear, that even in the time that passed from his jumping to when he died, there was time for him to receive God's mercy. And he assured her he had. But the same thing applies. We, we can, we can pray for everyone. There's no one beyond our prayer. Jesus died for everyone, not just those who love him. I think the last thing I want to say about all of that, the misunderstanding that God suffered torture and death to appease the wrath of God, who was angry with us and needed to torture us in order to be able to love us, is backwards. Christ's death did not cause God's love for you. God's love for you is what led to Christ's death. Christ did not die for you out of God's anger. He died for you out of God's love. And the love was not dependent upon that death. God loves everybody. But he leaves us and respects our freedom. We choose our outcome. He respects that. So that's a heavy burden and responsibility on us, right? So we need, as we said in Ephesians 2:8, going back to the beginning, "For by grace, through faith, you have been saved; not your doing at all, but the doing of God." God wants you in heaven more than you even desire to be there. So let's close with our prayer on page, what page? If I get in the right part of the book, I could find it. 53, you're right, it's 53. Let's say our memory verse one last time from 1 John 4:9. "In this the love of God was made manifest among us; that God sent his only-begotten Son into the world, so that we might live through him. In the name of the Father, Son of the Holy Spirit, almost holy Trinity, I adore you, who dwell by your grace in my soul. Sanctify me more and more. Make me love you more and more. Abide with me evermore and be my true joy. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son of the Holy Spirit. See you next week.